It's really the way that is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Adam Ely. I live on 3400 Dodson Branch Road. I've lived here since 2001. I came to go to Tennessee Tech. I'm from Knoxville, Tennessee, and I love this town, and that's why I've not gone back, even though there have been some job opportunities that have come up in the area. I'm looking in this one still. But I've got my concealed carry permit, and my wife and I, we like to go take walks after lunch sometimes through the park. I spend a lot of time trying to improve my frisbee golf game with my buddies there. And so I'm a frequent user of the park, so is my wife, and she keeps kids there by herself. A gentleman mentioned earlier about some of the things that have been in the paper that have happened there. Well, we've been there when those things have happened, and they're not nice. And as this city grows, and, you know, we start to get more people from Nashville and Knoxville area and all over, and I don't want it to see it become like Tyson Park in Knoxville. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that, but frankly, your chances are better in Fallujah in the year 2005 than they are in Tyson Park. And it's a gun-free zone, of course. As permitted carry holders, we are law-abiding citizens, and this has been said a number of times. But an interesting statistic that would be good to look at is to see the number of crimes committed by permitted carry holders in Tennessee. I believe as of 2006, that number is zero. As to people being afraid of us, we're in churches, we're in Walmart, we're in banks, we're all over this city, and nobody knows the difference. If we're doing our job right, concealing, nobody knows the difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. We've been deliberating over this for a little over an hour now, so if we could, if you've got a few comments to make, please come up and do so. Let's try to be as brief as we can. Yes, sir, go ahead. Go right ahead. You've got the floor.
I'll be brief. You've heard it all.
You've got the floor.
What I'm a Marine Corps veteran from World War II, and I've carried a gun in Florida for nine years as a special agent, and I was shot at a couple times during that time. So let me be a little prejudiced. But I think what you should do at this point is step back and look at yourself and say, who am I representing? Am I representing my legal constituents, or am I making things safe for the crooks in the park, for the rapists, robbers, and whatnot? That's about it. If you'll just step back and look at yourself and ask yourself that, I think you'll be all right.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Gianni. I moved to Cookeville about four years ago. I lived in the Los Angeles area all my life. And people ask me, what brought you to Cookeville? And my answer to that is, what drove me out of Los Angeles? One of the reasons of many is the crime rate. I feel a lot safer in Cookeville. We like Tennessee. And I'm a member of the NRA, and the reason I'm a member of the NRA is not because I like guns or am a gun person, but I feel that they are the people that protect our Second Amendment rights. And that's why I joined the NRA and continue to support them. And the reason I'm here tonight is because a couple days ago, I received this, and this is a card from the NRA saying, Mr. Gianni, your Second Amendment rights are in jeopardy. You'd better go to the council meeting and be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Jim Bryant, Cookeville, Tennessee. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
If I can talk louder. All right, 1991, 23 states adopted the right to carry law. Since then, nation's crime rate decreased 46 percent to a 43-year low. Violent crime decreased 41 percent to a 35 low. Right to carry law also, you know, averaged that, what have you. But violent crime decreased 24 percent, murder 28 percent, robbery 50 percent, aggravated assault 11 percent. These stats come from the FBI. So I think, when you think about what you're going to do tonight, you need to think where the information came from. FBI. Now, there's a guy down in Florida at the university, and he's done a study, and he said that weapons are pulled 2.5 times a year for protection, three to five times more often, he said, used than the criminals use them. But a vast majority of the weapons are never fired. We're talking about Florida a minute ago, permit holders being law-abiding and what have you. Everybody in here said tonight about how law-abiding permit holders are. In Florida, they've issued more gun permits than any state in the union, 1.5 million. But they've revoked only 166, or 1 one-hundredth of a percent, for the people that committed crime, carried a permit. So we need to think about going down here at this park, and somebody that's got a gun permit is going to do something, stop and think. Florida, only 1 one-hundredth of a percent of those people do anything. We're a whole lot safer than anybody else around. You talk about children having guns around them, and how bad it is. Since 1975, the accidental gun rate, gun deaths for children has declined 90 percent. You know what the odds are on a child being killed by rifle or pistol? A million to one.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. And thank you for this.
You don't want to hear the good stuff?
Well, we're trying to keep our limits down. I think we, I think we, in general, get to point your direction, and that you're going with this direction. But we're going to limit our time again to three minutes, but we appreciate your comments, and thank you for the information.
Raise that before you vote.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is John Slump. I live not in the city limits. I live just south of Cookeville, down on Burgess Falls Road. But my family does use your parks. And for me, this is not a question of, it's a question of a lot of things, but it's a question of personal responsibility. It's my job to defend my family. If these officers can help me, and they're great, that's wonderful. But I don't live in a neighborhood where the house next door is right here, and the police can be there in 30 seconds and all of that. And your parks aren't like that either. So these people that take their families to your parks, it's their responsibility to defend those people, and to defend you if you're there. So think from the standpoint of whose responsibility it is to take care of your family, and whose responsibility is to take care of my family. And the second thing I want to clear up, I've heard a lot of people talk about Tennessee's concealed carry permit. They don't have one. It is a handgun carry permit. If you want to carry it on your hip, great. If you want to put it under your coat, great. But it is a handgun carry permit. You do not have to conceal it. So I think that was all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Nell Deason, 4799 Bartlett Road. I've lived in Cookeville for 33 years. Cookeville is not the sleepy little town that I knew when we first came to Cookeville. It is, the crime rate has increased dramatically. I'm the mother of 11 children. I don't like guns. I'm scared of guns. I'm scared of guns. I don't want a carry permit. But I want those people out there to have the right to have one, to protect me. I'm scared to protect myself, but I want to trust these people, because I know your police department is overworked. I know it's underpaid. I lived in Atlanta, had a friend, lived right next to a park. The druggies and all sorts of undesirables had taken over the park. She was fearful to live in her own home, because it was right over the line, because people were not there to help protect her. I'd really like you to reconsider. I'd really like to see gun carry in the parks. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
My name's Louis Utley. I live in Bloomington Springs. I'm a cardholder. The only thing I got to say is, if I'm going in the park, and somebody comes up and pulls a gun on me, and I tell them, say, wait a minute, you can't shoot me. I've got a permit. He's going to shoot right through that permit. That permit's no good without that gun. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you for being brief there, too. Yes, sir.
My name's Isaac Haney. I've lived here in Cookeville all my life, just right over off, well, actually, right now, down in Dodson Branch. But we use your city parks quite a bit. I actually worked for the city for a while. I have a degree in criminal justice and police science. I'm right now in the final stages of testing for Metro Nashville Police Department. I have a handgun carry permit, and I have a federal firearms license. I sell guns and ammunition accessories for a living. So anything you can do to make it easier for people would kind of help me out a little bit, too. But all I would like to say is Sunset Boulevard used to be a safe place to be. Virginia Tech used to be a safe place for people my age to go to school. Columbine High School used to be a safe place to be a teacher. I heard the comment tonight that our parks are safe right now, and I would like for you guys to do what it takes to ensure that it stays that way.
Thank you. Any further comments? Well, we've had some good comments, and I certainly appreciate, certainly appreciate everybody being here tonight. I know this is a, this is a very to-heart topic for us. And I think, from what I'm hearing, the majority of people in this room are really concerned about safety. And, you know, we have those same concerns in driving our vehicles down the road. I know all of us being law-abiding citizens in here, and I truly believe that we've probably never, would never speed on Bob Terry's streets here in Cookeville. You know, all of us bend the law, as one gentleman put it earlier, just a little bit. But we all hopefully wear seat belts. I mean, our cars are designed with those. I grew up in the 70s, and my mother, every time we'd come to a stoplight, would throw her right arm out, because I was standing up in the front seat. I mean, it was before the days of seat belts and airbags. But we've got more and more people in our communities. I used to ride a bicycle as a little boy around this community at 10 years old, and I don't know if I'd let my kids in this town ride around on a bicycle. I can't seem to get enough bike trails and bike lanes in this community to make me feel safe about it. But I dare say that anybody in this room rode here tonight, knowing the risks of getting on our city streets with people driving around in 3,000 and 4,000 and 5,000 pound vehicles, I dare say anybody in this room tonight wore a helmet or a flame retardant suit to come out here. You knew the risks. You knew the risks. Sir, this is, this is not open for debate. I'm making my comments right now. There are risks in everything that we do in life, be it driving in a car or going to a city park. And you have to weigh in those risks in making your decisions in what you do. There's no 100 percent guarantee in life, other than death. I mean, there's, there's no guarantees in life. And, you know, when we look at this, I mean, I agree with everything that was said in here tonight. All the, all the permit holders and I applaud you for what you're doing, and I think it's great that we have people who are trained and carry their permits. And I know Bill Daley and I used to work together as bank couriers back in the 90s, and I could not get a permit. And I went to the sheriff, Jerry Abston, at the time, and I said, Jerry, I have to drive to Nashville on Friday and Saturday nights and go to the Federal Reserve. I wore a uniform, wore a little name badge, and carried a box that looked like I had money in it. And I could see people, as I walked into the bank, I would see their reflections as they turned around and made a double take on me. And it made me a little nervous. I mean, for a $6.50 an hour job, I didn't want to die. And I used to go down to Nashville, and two or three places that I had to stop, it was late at night typically, and I had to go around behind the air conditioning, where the air conditioning units were, there was a brick wall and a locked box, and by myself, in the dark, walk around behind there as people sat in the parking lot with hoods over their faces where I couldn't see them. And it made me a little nervous, because it looked like I was carrying money. So I went to Jerry Abston, and I said, Jerry, it makes me nervous. I mean, I don't want to die, you know. Can I carry my 9-millimeter with me? You know, it's against the law. What's going to happen? And Jerry said, and I don't guess he'd mind me saying this, but it's been, been a few years, but he said, I don't carry a gun in Putnam County. But when I take my wife to Nashville to go out to eat, I carry a gun. And I said, but Jerry, it's illegal. And his comment was, better to be tried by 12 than carried by 6. My point being is, nothing ever happened to me down there. And, and I did carry that gun illegally as a form of protection, because I felt like I needed it. And, you know, it's something that could happen. I mean, you know, you could have a problem. And there are places in situations like that, if I, if I was still doing that business today, you better believe I'd have a permit. But in our city parks, where we have our children, and we have parents who get really riled up over baseball games, you know, I've seen it many times. And I had another incident here recently, I was sharing with the council, that had my daughters at the playground, and I carry a knife that has a clip that goes in your pocket, you know. It's a Spyderco serrated blade. I carry a serrated blade, because I cut, might cut through a piece of wood or a piece of plastic pipe. I mean, it just, I use a knife that I carry. And serrated typically will stay sharp, even, it'll cut even when it's not sharp, I should say. But it is a pretty sharp knife. It's actually a little rescue knife, cut through rope and seat belts and that sort of thing, if you had to get somebody out of a kayak or a car or whatever. So I'm swinging with my kids, and then we get down out of the swings, and we go play on the slide for a little while. We get in the truck, and we head out. We get about 5, 10 miles away, and I realize I don't have my knife on me. And it's come off of me somewhere, either in my truck or that playground. And the first thought that went through my mind was, if a little kid picks up that knife and goes like this, he's going to cut himself. Because I cut myself on it nearly every time I opened it. And I immediately turned around, went back to that playground. I looked all over that playground for that knife, looked in my truck, could not find that knife. And there was another couple there with some other kids, and I told them what I was looking for, and I said, I don't care about the knife, you know. You know, I'm not worried about that. But if you find it, please, here's my card, call me and let me know, because I don't want it laying out here, and some kid to get hurt on it. Well, it could have been my little Taurus 22 that I have in my pocket. And if I'd been swinging, and it'd fallen out of my pocket, and me not known it, and then turned around, and some little kid picked it up, I mean, you can't take that risk, in my opinion. Putting guns for children are, it just doesn't seem like a, a good idea. Sir, you've had the floor, and I've got the floor now. And we will have order in this room, or we'll clear it out. Now, I'm going to tell you, there is not a compelling reason, in my mind, in any way to allow guns in our parks. We've looked at the statistics of all the crimes that have happened in our parks in the last couple, two or three years, and it's like 12 crimes, none of them violent. If we had a crime problem that we, you know, needed that, maybe it would be a different story tonight. But I, but I just see no compelling reason to put the two of these together. Ma'am, we are going to have order in this room. Please, you do not, we're not going to get out of order here. This was a civil meeting. Thank you.
First, let me say, I support gun owners' rights. I've been a gun carry permit holder for 15 years. My father had one of the first firearms businesses in this town for many years. And I can truly see both sides of this issue, and I appreciate the comments that were made tonight. I've received, I can't tell you how many emails, and I read every single one of them. This is obviously a very emotional issue, for different reasons, for different people. But I want to make a couple of points, one being for sure, that this ordinance in no way takes away anyone's right to lawfully, legally own a handgun or rifle. That's not what this is about at all. Okay? Also, a couple of things that haven't been discussed at all. If a city opts out before September 1st, they can opt back in at a later date. It leaves an option for the community. If the city allows the law to take effect, the city can never opt out. That's just, that's an option that would be taken away. Point two, if the city opts out, and a person with a handgun carry permit illegally has their gun in a park, and defends themselves or someone else, there is a provision for them to not be prosecuted. It is written in the ordinance, just something that hasn't been talked about, but it is in there. And the fact is, either way, this is an almost unenforceable ordinance. It truly is. The reality is, no matter what we do, we know criminals will take a gun wherever they want. Also, just being realistic, after the comments tonight, some gun carry permit holders may continue to take their guns wherever they feel a need to protect themselves. And if they don't break a law or do something stupid, they may never be caught. Much like there are posted speed limits, and every day, people knowingly drive above that speed limit. Or there's red lights meant to stop, but people go right through them. Sometimes they're caught, most of the time they aren't. You know, just like at a courthouse, a school, or even this council room, guns are not now allowed in parks. And as a permit holder, I truly just don't feel I'm being denied a right. I've never had that right. I take my children to the parks. I've never felt the need that I should have my gun with me while I'm at the park. If I truly probably felt that, I wouldn't go to the park. I wouldn't take my children and put them in that situation. That's just me. You're, how everyone else feels is certainly their right, and, and I'm not trying to take that away at all. But these are, I think, valid points. You know, nothing's stopping you from carrying it, nothing's stopping you from speeding, except your own conscience or whatever. So that's my comments.
I'd like to, go ahead. No, no. I, since I, someone first asked me, when I moved to Cookeville, you know, why I would run for city council, and I thought, well, because this is the greatest place in the world, you're able to serve your community, you're never going to have to answer any of the big questions like Second Amendment rights, or Roe v. Wade, or any things like that. It's team government, is what it is. And it truly is that. I think one thing that, that I found out, and I think that, I won't speak for the other council, but I can definitely agree with the crowd, is, is that this was, this was a decision that I feel was not made, meant to be made at the local level. This was a decision where our state legislator, state legislature handed us something that is very difficult to handle. And we, we as cities rarely make decisions like this. We did years ago, as it related to our parks, but it was completely different then. Like some on the council and some of you, I'm a, I have a permit to carry. I was, it was one of the very few perks, especially on days like tonight, where I get to spend some time with our police department. And Mr. Cersey also did take me through the class, in which I spent many hours in training and learning. I grew up as a hunter. My father and my grandfather were both hunters. I grew up taking Tennessee's first hunter's safety course. I remember that. It would, when I was a deer hunter, you had to do that in order to go deer hunting. The interesting thing about this whole process for me is, is that it comes down to certain things, certain decisions. I think what's different about maybe you and some on this council is that your principles are different. I heard the gentleman say at the back, he was talking about political or not political, or making political decisions and things like that. I think the challenge for us, before us, is that I was elected to serve this community. I'm a public servant of this community. People elected me based upon whatever my principles were at the time, whether they knew me or not, or whether they knew my fallen law, because he was in this community for years and years. I would love to have him here to ask him, Doug, what would you do here? It would be very challenging to do that. And I respect his opinion greatly. But this is something where I have to ask myself principally, and I ask my wife principally, what do I believe to be my own beliefs? And I think that's what this, I think that's what this council does. I think it, it makes it very challenging for us, because the state legislature could have done it completely different. And so one thing is without a doubt, we live in a very safe community. We live in a great community. We live in a community where we can come here today, and whether you hear the comments of, of us, you're always going to, we're always going to hear your comments, whether you walk out the door or not, or whether you agree with us or not. But that's what makes this community and this nation great. And so it's with that that I encourage all of us to think, whether we're here tonight, or on this bench, or thinking about running again for this service, remember, we're here to serve. We're here not because of any other reason, except that we love our communities. And we appreciate you all coming out tonight. Thank you.
Very good.
In thinking about this, and trust me, we have all thought about this many, many times. And this was put on the agenda over a month ago, and this council decided that it needed to come off of the agenda, so that we could have response from the public. So you may feel that our minds were made up, but what you didn't see, what you haven't heard, are the phone calls and the emails that we received in the time that has transpired since the first time we wanted to discuss it. And I was extremely careful when I spoke to people, and some of you may be in here tonight, I would say, do you live in the city of Cookeville? Are you a member? Are you a citizen? Because I learned early on in my service here, that that's my first duty, is to the people, the citizens of the city of Cookeville. And it is a decision that you, that it's an emotional decision on all parts. I am definitely not an anti-gun person. Come check out my father's military record, my brothers, my nephews, my nieces. You know, when my father dies, I'm hoping that I will inherit one of his guns. But I am not a gun carrier. I mean, I don't have a permit, don't have any desire to, simply because it's an expensive hobby, and that I'd spend my money somewhere else. But I really believe that the city of Cookeville and our parks are safe as they are right now. And I think that we need to opt out and make sure that we continue to keep them safe.
Thank you.
One, one thing to, one other thing to say, as this goes through, if it passes, as we go through this process of defining parks, you know, there's a soon-to-be park, a rail trail that's going to go through three communities in this county. And, you know, we'll have public opinion and public comment again at a later date, you know. A linear park like that, that goes into wilderness, and that goes through rugged areas, and that many more places to hide, and all those kinds of things, that would be a pertinent, in my opinion, a pertinent place for someone to have that. And that's something we will, we will deal with at another time, and you will be a public notice about it, and we'll welcome your comments. But, you know, certainly, this isn't shutting the door on anything. It's merely doing what we, as Councilman Williams said, you know, we listen to our constituents. I've received all the emails, and I've read every one of them. Mr. Gianni, I received two of those orange cards in the mail. So, you know, I, this isn't taken lightly. It's not an easy decision. It should not have been dumped in our laps. The better option from the state would have been to throw it out there and let every community opt in, not opt out. Why not, you know, it was the absolute wrong thing to push off onto us. But they did, and we must make the tough decision, whatever we feel is in the best interest of our community.
Thank you, Ricky. Any other comments by the council?
I'd just like to reiterate, you know, that all of us are just interested in the public safety of our community, as are all of you. I think we are. And that, someone made that comment earlier. I think that we're all trying to move towards that. And, you know, as Ricky stated, this is something that we can revisit if we opt out today, if we can relook at it. And it would be my hope that the state legislature would relook at it. I know overwhelmingly, the communities that I've read about in the state of Tennessee have opted out of this. And it is almost an unenforceable type of law. A lot of times, and, you know, we, we talk Uh, a lot of times, and, and, uh, you know, we, we talk about this with the guns in the parks. A lot of times we have young, uh, uh, you know, girls and boys, you know, teenage people working out at the park in the summertime. And, you know, you've got a 16-year-old person out there that's all of a sudden got people with guns, and she or he are going to have to decide whether or not they're going to check the permit to see and enforce this. And it, it, and, and there's a lot of other issues there, too. So, it, you know, it needs to be relooked at. Hopefully, the state can relook at it and we can come up with something. I know, uh, I too, I know someone said they had a degree in criminal justice. I too have a degree in criminal justice and, and, uh, did a senior thesis that, that most of you will be proud of, that, uh, gun control does not equate crime control. And, uh, you know, a lot of times, it's easier to just pass a gun control law and, instead of dealing with the real issue, which is crime. And, uh, it would be my hope that the state of Tennessee legislators could get back together and actually work on something to deal with crime, um, and help prevent it. So, that being said, any other comments by the council? Um, I, I know that you all probably have some more comments, and, and, and we would love to hear those. But we've got a whole agenda here to move forward on. And if we could at this time, uh, we'll just, uh, if the council has no other comments, we will, um, take a vote. All vote?
Four yes, one no. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. And thank you all for coming. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. And we'd like to encourage you to also come back to our other meetings as well.
Can I ask a question during the transition? It's not a rhetorical question, it's actually an information question.
Let's, can you wait till after the meeting? We'll give everybody, you can have three minutes to speak at the end of the meeting, if you want.
Take a break if you want to.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and get started here on item nine, oop, that was just item nine. Item 10, we don't want to revisit item nine.
No, let's not go over it.
Item 10, consider resolution 090812, authorizing the participation in the Tennessee Municipal League Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Grant Program. Sponsor Ms. Kathy Andrews.
Mayor and city council, this resolution will authorize the participation in the TML grant program. This grant is for $2,000. Uh, we will be purchasing two tasers for the police department. It requires a 50% match. Uh, we will utilize the purchase of bulletproof vests to service the match. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I recommend your approval.
All right, thank you, Ms. Andrews. Do we have a motion and a second to approve? We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
Is it an equal match?
It's a 50%, 50/50.
Okay, all right.
All right, do we have any other questions, comments? Any comments from the audience? Seen none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Item 11, hold a public hearing relative to the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. Sponsor Ms. Kathy Andrews.
Mayor and city council, um, the city of Cookeville has applied for an Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant that, under the 2009 Local Solicitation Program. The ground, the grant amount is $11,450. It requires no match. Uh, one of the program requirements is that we, uh, have a public hearing to inform the public that the city has applied for the funds and what we're going to utilize the funds for. Uh, we will be purchasing, um, four, four laptop computers for the county and six for the city of Cookeville. The, the, the way the, uh, grant program is structured, we're considered, uh, a, a community that we have to share the, um, the grant with county. Since we are, um, applying for the grant and administering it, administering it, we are going to take six of the laptops and give them four.
Sounds fair.
That, I thought that was a pretty good deal. Um, but, and I'm required to get, to tell you that the purpose areas are law enforcement programs, prosecution in court, prevention and education programs, correction programs, drug treatment and enforcement programs, planning evaluation and technology improvement programs. That's the, um, criteria that we're applying under, and crime victim and witness programs. Uh, we were only given a, like a 36-hour window to get this grant in. And we, Randy, um, Captain Randy Evans and I decided that, that the technology program would be the best, because we could put it together the fastest and not leave the money on the table.
Okay.
Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I recommend your approval.
All right, thank you, Ms. Andrews. Do we have a motion and a second?
I don't even know if you have to do an emotion in a second on a public hearing, though.
Oh, that's right, this is a public hearing, this isn't. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item 12, consider approval of intergovernmental agreement for fiber optic cable installation. Sponsor Mr. Jim Shipley.
For, uh, a couple of months now, we've been talking to, uh, basically Randy Porter with Emergency Services. They're wanting to run a fiber optic, uh, cable from basically the Justice Center down to the new Emergency Services building. And they're going to go right by City Hall and by a lot of our traffic signals. And they wanted to know if we wanted to share in the cost. Uh, the total estimated cost is $60,000, and our share will be 20. Uh, we'll paper that out of the State Street Aid Fund. Uh, there's 72 strands, fiber optic strands. The city's actually going to get 32, and the other two parties, the Emergency Services and Putnam County, will get 20 each. Uh, and it will greatly enhance our traffic signal capabilities, as well as our computer networking. And there will be a lot of extra strands that at some point the city will be able to lease some of those strands. I would recommend your approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shipley. Do we have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have our motion and a second. Any discussion by the council?
Seems like we're getting the most out of everything tonight.
Well, we pointed out to them that, uh, that we had already done some, quite a bit of work and, uh, that we'd had some money invested. So, they threw in the extra 12 strands for free.
Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seen none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item 13, consider appointments to the Cookeville Tree Board. And, uh, we've kind of been going through some tree board replacements. We certainly appreciate the work of those, uh, folks. I don't know if we have anybody here tonight from the tree board that has any presentation. Um, at this time, let's see, this is from Peggy Evans, the chair of the Cookeville Tree Board. Uh, we reappointed Mike Witt, I believe, back in May.
You're reappointing him, you appointed him in May?
We appointed him in May to fill a position, and now we're going to reappoint him.
Reappoint him and appoint Linda Carlin.
And...
And Linda Carlin.
Linda Carlin. That's right, here we go. All right, so we have two, and these will be full terms, then?
Yes, three-year term.
All right, uh, I'll make that as a motion. I don't know if we...
Second.
We've got a second. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seen none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item 14, consider awarding bid for the fire sprinklers protection systems for the fire department. Sponsor Chief John Kendrick.
Mayor and council, what I have before you is the bid that we opened to put fire protection systems in the four fire stations. A and E Fire Protection was the only bid. We did have five bidders at a pre-construction conference, with three of those giving the intent they were going to bid. Uh, so we feel we had a good bidding process. We're unsure why the other vendors didn't follow through. Uh, but I would recommend their approval. I would also like to ask you to allow me to negotiate with A and E Fire Protection up to $7,500 for a change order to extend the coverage in this building, other than what we originally put in the scope of the bid.
All right. Say what now? Say that again.
To be allowed to negotiate up to $7,500 additional dollars to extend the coverage in this building, which we had not originally put in the, the bid. We had the plans drawn to extend.
For this building, that, and down low, okay.
We would be looking at extending the coverage into Planning and Codes area. We have, uh, individuals that review fire plans and stuff, and that would be the direction we would take that extension.
Well, John, you, you'll have to bring a change order back for their approval anyway. It's over $5,000.
And I guess, uh...
This is grant money, isn't it?
Yes, this is grant money.
All this money is grant money.
But not the $7,500.
We're, we're a 10% match on this. The total grant, uh, was $198,000, with federal share being $178, uh, 122 of this is for sprinklers and fire stations, $38,000 for exercise, and $33,800, I think, is for extrication. Those numbers may be off a little bit.
But 100% of this is $8,700, or 90% of this is $8,700 is grant money.
Correct. Uh, we bid this with the utilities as a, uh, with the utility putting in the water lines as an option. That's why we're only presenting this inside portion of the bid. Uh, it was $32,000 for them to do the water lines, and we've gotten with Ronnie. And with their equipment cost and material cost, it's going to be about half of that.
All right, do we have a motion and a second to approve this?
I don't know, do we?
No.
Can we get a, let's get a...
So moved.
No motion and a second.
I'm still confused where the $7,500 is coming from, you know.
It's going to come out of, I mean...
It will come out the total amount that was originally appropriated for this project, if we extend that scope of the...
So, the amount, uh, we've appropriated for the 10% will include the $7,500?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
How much does that leave in the grant? Nothing?
Uh, I've still have $38,000 of the grant to use in exercise equipment we haven't purchased yet.
So, are you taking money from the exercise to...
No, I, I have up to $122,100 appropriated for the sprinklers in the stations.
Okay.
And right now, if I take the $87,450 and add in the plans, uh, development, add in what the utility department's going to charge us for installing the water lines to within three feet of point service, if I negotiate up to the $7,500, I'm going to be real close to the $122 total.
Okay. Any other comments by the council?
Okay, explain to me again, I'm sorry.
It's confusing, I understand.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Start at the top with, what do you, what's the total grant amount that you have? That you're going to spin towards fire...
Just for the sprinkler portion or for the...
Everything.
The total, total grant?
Total grant's $198,000 with the federal share $178,000. It's a 10% match of $19,800.
So, you have $178,000 in grant money, and then $19,000...
It was a match.
An $800 local.
Which $20,000 was in last year's budget. We have spent part of that, the rest of that carries to this year.
I think that was the main question, was where was our match coming?
Yeah, the matches was appropriated last year.
Okay, all right.
This is budget neutral.
All right, any, any further comments? Seen no comments, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item number 15, consider awarding bid for one new side-load sanitation truck. Public Works Department, sponsor Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently opened bids for a new side-load sanitation truck. We received three bids. Um, the two bids from Stringfellow were for the same truck. The high bid, uh, is for a truck that the chassis and cab is already, uh, there. Only thing I have to do is put a body on it, which is why the delivery time is 60, 90 days. The other two, we'll have to order it from Mack, and that's why the long lead time. The truck that it's replacing is the 2004 model, the first side-load that we bought. Last few years, we've had quite a bit of repair cost on it. I think, uh, 12, a little over $12,000 last year and $20,000 the year before. So, if that happens again this year, I think we would be losing money, uh, by waiting nine to 10 months before we, uh, got the truck. So, that's why I would recommend the, the high bid of Stringfellow.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have our motion and our second. Overall, have you been satisfied with side-load?
Yes, it's, as far as workman's comp claims and, uh, speed of, uh, service, it's quite a bit.
At one time, you sort of, you mentioned that in order to maybe reduce time, that that truck goes, it has to go down a road, turn around and come back the other side. We talked about putting the carts in certain areas on one side.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to come up with, uh, some test areas to do that. Uh, one of the main things that'll help is on fuel costs.
Okay. Are, are you satisfied that, i- is this the same exact truck, chassis and engine that we have had the problems with?
Well, we've got three that are just the same. The one, the very first truck, we had some problems with. The last two trucks that we've had, we haven't...
Okay.
No, there's not been very minor repairs.
Okay.
Okay.
And that, we were one of the first ones to even purchase, though, weren't we? I mean, that was...
There have been some others around. This is probably one of the first in this area.
Right.
Has done it, but, okay.
Our motion needs to, uh, reflect that we're, you're recommending that bid based on the, uh...
Delivery time.
That was my motion.
Okay.
I think they said that.
All right, very good. Any further comments from the council? Seen none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Item 16, consider resolution 090813, authorizing and providing for the financing of the construction of a wastewater facilities project and execution of necessary documents and pledges of certain revenue. Sponsor Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we have a, uh, authorizing resolution we would like the council to consider. It's an, it's a resolution authorizing and providing for the financing of a construction of the wastewater, that Hudgens Creek area, that SRF loan. And I'm going to go through real quick what, what you're basically going to be agreeing to. It approves the creation of indebtedness in principal amount of $3.5 million. Approves Mayor Sully to sign the loan application. Forgives $1.4 million of the loan principal, basically going to act like a grant uh, to qualify for the, uh, American Resource Recovery Act funds. The construction must have begun or all contracts signed by February 17th, 2010. Failure to comply with those results and immediate termination of the loan agreement. And if you've, uh, gotten any funds, you have to pay those back. Uh, agreed to honor and accept the method of financing. Agree to make monthly payments. Agree to levy fi- uh, fees, rates, charges and/or levy ad valorem taxes sufficient to pay back the loan and the operational maintenance costs. Agrees to sign, uh, the signed city-state share taxes to the state and consent to the withholding of state shared taxes to repay the loan. Agree to the local pledge of state share taxes or other, other than those disclosed. It agree, you're agreeing to obtain alternative financing for all costs necessary to complete the project in excess of the loan amount and authorizes the mayor to execute the loan agreement and any amendments on behalf of the city council. It repeals all orders, resolutions or ordinances in conflict with this resolution and becomes effective immediately upon its passage. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Pretty scary stuff.
Well, it's, we've done these before. It's, uh, Mr...
I don't know if I've told them all that or not.
Well, it's, I mean, it's, if you want their money, it's like they, we, we, we got the package Monday. We've got to have it back to them by Monday at 10 o'clock. And there's lots of things that had to get done. Mr. Rader has to have letters. Mr. Sully's got to stay after the meeting tonight and sign a lot of these documents for us.
But I mean, you're already complying with all those provisions, are you not? As far as the construction's already started.
Construction's not...
And we're not going to have to pay the money back.
We haven't started anything yet. We're just agreeing to that this is what you're going to do. But we've done these on other projects. It's just the conditions that you're going to guarantee, you're going to repay the loan.
But you don't have any concern that you're not going to start paying?
To meet the deadline. I've got to have it back in their fingers Monday at 10 o'clock.
Can we meet the deadlines not to have to pay it?
Oh, yeah, but even if we didn't meet the deadline, we haven't got any money from them.
What happens if the, what happens if the, if we bid the project out once the drawings are complete and the number comes under our actual bid proposal? Is it a percentage and it's reduced? The 1.4 million is reduced by the 3.2? Or do we get the 1.4 regardless of the 3.5?
I think we're going to, the 1.4 was based on the 3.5. There's a, the percentage, 50% is loan money, a certain percent is AAR, ARR money. There's other percentages. I'll probably tell you tomorrow, because I'm driving to Nashville in the morning, hand it, we're going to go through this to make sure it's correct, in case there's a foul up, that we can get it corrected before Monday morning, because that's the dead, drop dead date. It's about, uh, I think our rent interest rate will be about 2.5%, somewhere in that range. This is, I mean, this is the exact same thing we've done in other SRF loans. There's just a little...
Well, the impetus for going quickly is that we get $1.4 million in debt forgiveness.
Yes, yes.
It was just TMI.
Well, we're ready to go with the project. We're, you know, we're ready to go with the project anyway. The carrot was the 1.4 million to hold up to try to get that.
So, we do have, uh, construction documents?
They're put, being put together currently.
All right, let's get a, a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
So moved.
We have our motion and our second. Now we can begin debate. Anybody have any further comments?
We just want to know if it's a doable thing and if it's safe to do.
I want to make sure we have consensus on this before I go signing a bunch of these...
I think you're saying that.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's doable. Where we've got to do the project to feed the, uh, new industrial park's going to feed into this. We've been working on it for two or three years now. And this is, we're going to get the... The positive is, it's, we've sort of held back because we knew the stimulus was coming. Hopefully, we could take advantage of that. And it appears we're gonna be able to take advantage of one-point-four million dollars of that. So, I think it's a no-brainer to do it.
Right.
We sort of covered the rate structure when we did this, and the rate structure, we borrow the money. If we don't borrow the money, the rate structure needs to go up a little bit higher than we raised the rates previously.
Mike Davidson thinks it's okay.
I don't know if Mike's even looked at part of this.
That's the wrong thing to say.
Well, Jim's been involved with them. I'm trying to remember, Mike's been through these SRF programs before.
Yeah, yeah.
'Cause I think the last one we did was probably two thousand...
From a financial standpoint, Mike and I see the three-point-five million dollar project, and we got one-point-four million in principle forgiveness we're in.
Yeah.
I would recommend you our approval.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments by the council? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Bob, yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And at that time...
That brings us to our hearing of citizens indoor delegations. But, before we open the floor, for up to three minutes, you can get up and speak about anything that's on your mind. And we've certainly had a lot of good comments tonight. I'll open it up to the council before we go to the audience. Any comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I went to the last concert in the park this past Monday, and I just wanted to talk again about leisure services, all the things that they do. And all of our departments in our city work so wonderfully, but that's, you know, people only really notice the sewer, sorry, Ronnie, when it doesn't work. But, when it, you know, you're not gonna get too many compliments on, wow, my toilet flushes and it goes away from my house, like, you know, leisure... This started out as something very kind, and what I wanted to say was that I appreciated leisure services and all that they do and the outdoor activities. And the concert in the park was wonderful, and Mr. Williams is getting ready to...
You're not gonna steal my thunder.
No, I'm not. I'm gonna introduce what you're going to say, and I think that that's one of the things I like the best about Cookeville. I've probably sat up here too long tonight.
Alright, thank you.
I was just picking on Alma earlier, but I would like to invite everybody out this weekend. We're gonna have some events at the park tomorrow night. We're gonna have a movie in the park, first movie we've ever had in the park, twenty-five by thirty-five inflatable screen. I can now say that it is not at the museum. I do not have to speak in code. It's not at the museum, too. Battle of Smithsonian, so it'll be free. We will pass the proverbial plate. Obviously, we're trying to raise money for Dogwood Park and the improvements there, so we don't have to raise taxes to do that. Then, on Saturday night, we got the kids' miler. It's a one-mile fun run for kids. We've got a little over seventy-five kids signed up for it. They get a free tee-shirt. You get a free tee-shirt for kids, and they come out in droves. Then, at eight-fifty-eight, we're having the eight-k road race. We've got a little over three-hundred-and-fifty people signed up, but everyone in Cookeville is a procrastinator. So, we didn't have... They'll always have about a hundred-and-fifty sign up the night of the event. So, we'd like to invite all of you to come out. Abby and I worked hard to try to get that, and Alma's gonna have a party at her house, and only half the people are invited in this room.
Alright, any other comments from the council?
That was great, Ryan. I applaud you for all your efforts in organizing that event and helping our park over here. Very excited about that, and I know we all are. It's been a huge project for us.
Mr. Sully, I have one more comment to make. And I do want to express my feelings over how much of a response we've gotten, and I have appreciated citizens calling, sending emails. That means a lot to me particularly, and I'm sure to the rest of the council. And that's a very important process. And as somebody who teaches U.S. history, it's nice to see our democracy at work. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma.
I, too, would like to... I beg people to come. I always talk about there's empty seats in this council chamber. But, you know, and it is nice to hear all the comments and have all the feedback that we've had on that issue. And I certainly would say to those, the folks that were here earlier that have left, and those of you that are still here, that your comments did not fall upon deaf ears. I mean, they're very good comments, and this is a tough subject that we went through tonight with the guns in the park. And I would hope that we could encourage you to take that same enthusiasm for the topic tonight and apply that to other topics and other issues that we have in our community, and stay involved in not only the government here in Cookeville, but the state government and the national government as well. Unless anybody has any other comments, I'll open it up now to the floor. You can come and speak anytime at our council meetings. At the end of our meeting, we give citizens indoor delegations up to three minutes to speak.
I don't need but just a second or two. Now that the ordinance is passed and the ban will go into effect, it is my understanding, and someone with more knowledge than I could correct me if I'm wrong, but the Cookeville City Court is not a court of record and does not... It is a civil court and doesn't have the authority to put someone in jail. Now, Mr. Rader could correct me if I'm wrong, but I have participated in the city court process in the past, and that is my understanding. So, therefore, if someone's caught in a park with a weapon illegally, what's the penalty?
First of all, I do wanna make it clear that the council's action tonight did not prohibit anybody from carrying a gun any place they could not carry a gun before tonight.
Understood.
It's been illegal to carry a gun with the intent to go armed. Now, that's the key phrase, with the intent to go armed, in the park for years and years and years, and wherever else in the city of Cookeville that it's otherwise prohibited. But, that is, it's a state statute. There's a city ordinance that prohibits, and if you're cited under the city ordinance, it's a fifty-dollar civil penalty. If you're cited under the state statute, they can confiscate your weapon, and depending upon the circumstances, if you're charged, you could be liable for a misdemeanor that would carry a thousand-dollar fine and up to eleven months and twenty-nine days in jail, and the confiscation of your weapon. Or a Class A misdemeanor, that's a much smaller fine and only up to thirty days in jail. But, that would be up to Judge Hudson, or Judge Goolsbee, or Judge Burns, or Judge Patterson to do that. So, you could be cited under either the state statute or the city ordinance.
No, just for my own understanding, 'cause I'm just a barber and not a lawyer. Because the state passed their law, which lifted the ban on all parks, would that not make the state portion of that null and void, and it's only enforceable under the city ordinance? I could be wrong.
No. That's what the state statute said was, that the state statute says it's not legal to carry guns in city parks. And they said from this time forward, the cities can decide whether or not to apply that state statute in their own particular parks. So, now the law is consistent in Putnam County, and Monterey, and Cookeville, that it remains a violation of state law to carry a gun with the intent to go armed in city park, whether you have a permit or not.
Okay. Well, just for the record, if you come to Veterans Barber Shop, feel free to bring your gun with you.
Thank you.
And, of course, the city has to post their parks.
My name's Donna Haynes, and I actually wanted to talk some about the annexation of Free Hill Road, North Washington Avenue. And, you know, I came to the planning commission meeting a couple weeks ago, and everybody who spoke about it, except for Mr. Mills, was against it. Everybody I heard tonight speaking about the guns in the parks thing spoke against... I may have missed some, I had to go feed my grandson. But, everybody I heard spoke against it, and I'm not seeing that y'all are complying with, you know, your constituents. I'm wondering what it will take to not get my property annexed into the city. If I get all those property owners to sign a petition, say, none of us want it, or ninety percent of us don't want it, is that enough? What will it take? Not a rhetorical question.
Well, that's a good question. Of course, I'm on the planning commission.
Yeah, yeah, I remember you the other night.
So, the question before the council coming up, tonight, we set a hearing date, okay? In that hearing date, if you and your people that oppose the annexation come out and your voice is heard, 'cause you're catching four out of five off-guard tonight.
Right.
Okay, so, and they weren't... We were just setting a hearing, so they're not aware of what was discussed in the planning commission. So, during that hearing, you have the opportunity to come and to have your voice heard then as well, because the planning commission is presenting that for the council to study over the next period of time and have a hearing of citizens. So, we encourage you to do that. And, of course, every annexation is handled differently, so we'd encourage you to come out. There are different contributing factors as to whether we annex property in and that kinda thing. So, as we study that going forward, the planning commission just makes recommendations for the council to study it. And so, we're gonna study at that point. So, we encourage you to come out to the hearing, and that's where you're gonna be.
What goes on at hearings? I'm not... I don't know.
It's much like you heard tonight. You're gonna have the opportunity to come and speak at the lecture and make your case and that kinda thing as it relates to each one.
And then, y'all will make a decision?
Yes, ma'am.
Or is that... Mr. Mills, I think, described, or maybe it was the chairman of the planning commission described, that there's like two readings, so it's a public hearing twice? Is that what goes on?
The law, our meetings are public...
It's officially a public hearing on the first reading, but you can see the way this council conducts business, every meeting is a public hearing. I mean, that's just the way they do business.
Every property owner I've gotten to talk to so far, and we all work for a living, so it's difficult for us to get around and talk to all of them.
Right.
They're against it.
Yeah.
We don't want it. And I just want to kinda know what the ground rules are, what it takes to get y'all to do it.
And I'll just help you out a little bit. Some of your neighbors actually called and requested to be rezoned. So, either you haven't talked to them, or they're not saying the same thing that they requested from us. So, that's... Pardon? I mean, annexed, I apologize.
And remember that you can contact the council via email and by calling the city.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't received all the packet of information about all that, and we do it. And I can for sure tell you, and I know the rest of the council, I read my stuff, I prayerfully consider it and think about it and arrive at a decision. It may or may not be what you want, but it will be a decision based on the facts that I read and what I hear and what I understand and the reasoning behind it. That's how we operate.
If we wanted to be in the city, that's one thing, but, you know, it seems like if y'all annex us, at least for my part, it's against my will. That's my property. Do you see, you know, I'm just, you know... Anyhow, that's all I have.
Thank you for coming tonight. Alright, any other comments from the audience?
Ms. Anderson, I know you're a teacher at every trace.
Yes.
I was just wondering if your decision on item nine affected your, you know, by your occupation, if that affected your decision?
Say that again.
Being a teacher, did that affect your decision tonight on item nine?
It's... That's a very hard question for me to answer, because being a teacher is so intrinsic to my nature, and also because of the subject matter that I teach also. Which is U.S. history. And so, yes, I mean, it is gonna go into my decision-making process, but the bottom line was, for me, that over the period of time, from the first time that this was brought up at this council till now, the overwhelming majority of people who contacted me were against having parks, guns in the park. So, you know, that's a very good question, but how do you separate something, particularly a job like teaching, which is such a part of me? So, yes, I think probably it did go into it.
Well, as far as going, you know, the point that was brought up tonight about, you know, how guns aren't allowed in schools, and nor are they allowed in courtrooms, or, you know, meetings like this, you know, a point like that, did that go into your decision-making?
Yes, I'm sure it did, yes.
Alright, okay. Ms. Sully, you talked about gun control versus crime control. Could you kinda elaborate on that?
Well, I think a lot of times, our country has a very big job of their justice system. And a lot of times, and it's my belief that the easy way out of that is to kinda pass a law that says, you know, you can't do this or can't do that, but it doesn't really deal with the core issue of the criminal justice system. And, you know, it's been a while since I put together my senior thesis at Tennessee Tech in the Criminal Justice Department out there for Hank Manley, but, you know, I think that time would be better spent by our state legislators to revisit this and maybe come up with a better way for us to control crime, rather than just, in my opinion, basically saying, you know, we can't handle it, so here, take your guns and do it yourself. I just think that's not the most proactive and responsible way that they could've done that.
Is there a need for crime control in our parks?
You know, based upon the facts that I saw from Chief Bob Terry, I mean, the amount of crime in our parks is so minuscule, that when you have twelve offenses over the course of two years, the pie chart looks really impressive, but when you look at the numbers, it's really small amount of crime there.
If I can just ask one more question to you, Mr. Williams. You voted against the motion. Why is that?
I think when... It's a good question. When I was thinking about this early on, I'm not... And I spoke earlier about principle. I think what I see is, as a citizen of Cookeville and of America, that there's... I may have differing principles than a lot of people. I was raised with guns. I probably relate more probably to the people in this room just communicating about guns than I do to others. I don't know if that's 'cause I'm originally from east Tennessee or what, but when I... I'm not as fearful of guns as some may be. But, I think one of the comments that was made, and I tend to agree, is the only thing